Is that better?
Mrs. Baker?
Here.
Mr. Davidson?
Here.
Mr. Isgro?
Here.
Mr. Sprague?
Here.
Let the record show that Pastor Shaq is excused and will be with us at executive session.
Okay, next work session, Mr. Holbrook.
President Baker, tonight I have the pleasure of introducing the Highland Elementary Administrative Team, Mr. Ryan Britton, Ms. Ellie Lawson, and they're here tonight to talk to us about some of the wonderful things that are going on at Highland Elementary. Ryan, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for having us. Thank you, President Baker, and Mr. Davidson, Mr. Isgro, as well as Mr. Sprague. I want to also thank--
Wait, hold up.
Yes. Oh, is it not on? Ah, there we go. I apologize. Well, let's start again. Thank you so much. I'm Ryan Britton, the proud principal at Highland Elementary School. I want to thank President Baker, Mr. Davidson, Mr. Isgro, and Mr. Sprague, as well as our superintendent, Mr. Holbrook, Mr. Wright, Mrs. Blevins, and Mr. Frazier for having us this afternoon to talk to you about all the great things happening here at Highland. And we wanted to thank Dr. Kopus for being here, a new board member in 2024. Thanks so much. We can't wait to share with you as well all the great things, everything we love about Highland Elementary School. So at Highland this year, we are shooting for the moon for all of our students. Since day one with our staff, we've been focusing on this mission for our students with a focus on PBIS, growing student success, and building our staff's capacity to help all of our students grow both academically and socially, as well as connecting with our community. And at the end of the day, it really is all about our kids. PBIS, or our Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, is a huge strength at Highland Elementary School. This year is the second year in a row that Highland has received the Gold Recognition Award for the 2023 Ohio PBIS Showcase, and Highland was one of 41 schools, only 41 schools in the entire state of Ohio, that received this honor. And it exemplifies and recognizes schools and districts for their quality and fidelity with tiers of support within PBIS. So I'm very, very proud of that, and it takes our entire school and community to support that. With our Tier One level, we've been expanding our SEL, or our Social Emotional Learning, through second step. It's our second year of implementation, and we've expanded this year to also include our preschool students. So all preschool through sixth grade students, every Monday morning, we start with a lesson on PBIS and what we can do to help ourselves and help others. We also are increasing our family engagement by weekly communicating with families what we talk about in the classroom so they can connect from home to school and better build that relationship. And we're making database decisions to look at the number of students that we service and support and identify those Tier Two supports needed. We've expanded our school-wide celebrations to quarterly PBIS celebrations. Mrs. Lawson was a huge component of that. And all preschool through sixth grade students can earn coming to quarterly celebrations at school with thresholds of behavior and exemplifying our PBIS standards of our five pillars through the pride: personal responsibility, respect, integrity, determination, and empathy. And we also have other opportunities for students to be celebrated with positive reinforcement. They can earn individual dojo points that they can cash in every month at the dojo store. We also have individual compliment tickets outside of the classroom where a teacher or staff member can recognize a student that isn't in their classroom with them. And every Wednesday, we call their compliment tickets, and they can come get a book from our book vending machine or another prize in the office and also build that positive relationship with me and Mrs. Lawson. And we have our classroom celebrations through golden tickets where they work as a class to exemplify those PBIS characteristics, to grow and learn together as a classroom community. I'd like to turn it over now to Mrs. Lawson, who's going to talk about our tiered supports through PBIS.
Thank you, everyone, for having us this evening. I'm Ellie Lawson, and this is my second year at Highland as the Assistant Principal. So one of the many wonderful things that makes Highland Highland is that we understand students' needs, support on academics, as well as their social-emotional learning. We also know that some students may need more support than others. So to address those needs, we have, and whether that may be more frequent check-ins, more positive adult interactions in the building, we've worked to meet those needs through monthly multi-tiered systems of supports. We call it MTSS. So we have monthly meetings with each grade-level team, and all shareholders are invited to that meeting. Everyone who works with that student in the school building, they're present, and we work on both academic and social-emotional needs of those students. We also have our check-in-check-out intervention, and with that, we are identifying students that need a little bit more positive interaction, positive feedback throughout the day, and just more frequent intervention. And we have worked with our staff this year to strengthen that intervention through explicit training on that and also through a fidelity system. Another thing that we do is we now have 17 individual staff members in our building who are mentoring individual students. So they meet with them once a week to talk about how things are going and also build that positive school relationship. And then we know we could not do all of this without our amazing community partnerships that we have, one of those being Catalyst. So Catalyst Counseling, which through them, we have three full-time therapists in our building that are in constant communication with us, and we collaborate with them to meet the needs of those high-needs students. And then we have so many other community partnerships that we appreciate, and they are in constant communication with us. So I'd like to hand it back to Mr. Britton to talk about growing our student successes.
So this year at Highland, we are focusing on three areas when we grow our student success. We wanted to start the year by increasing our instructional minutes and our focus through our BLT. So in the spring, our BLT sat down, and we dissected our master schedule to do three things. We wanted to increase instructional minutes in the classroom, allow time for teachers, including all shareholders on the team, to have common plans and time to meet together daily where they can talk about students, ways we're supporting and be able to plan together. And we wanted to minimize those transition times and those common negative behaviors. We wanted to focus on our real-time data. So using our NWEA or our MAP data in the fall, paired with our OST data, our Ohio State Test, in the spring, we continued to do a deep dive into that real-time data and see what that says about our students' needs, how we're reaching our students, and what we need to do to pivot and grow all of our students. Data tells us we need to be focusing on rich Tier One instruction and then pairing that with supports to catch our students up and continue to close that gap. And data is no longer a four-letter word. It's driving our instruction. It just tells us what we're doing, how our kids are doing, and what we need to do next to help everybody succeed. It takes all shareholders to identify, support, and assess those needs. We also, I want to celebrate that early literacy intervention is working, and it's working at Highland. With a focus on growth, we exceeded both the state and the district percentages with a 13% increase in proficiency on our fall OST from 2022 to 2023. The state average increased 7%. So we are so proud to continue to soar at Highland with new heights, and I'm so proud that that focus on our early literacy intervention continues to grow and feed on up as those students grow. We're looking forward to our winter benchmark data in January when we return to break so we can celebrate, pivot, and make sure we're continuing our individual supports for students on all those tiered levels. Now, I'd like to turn it over to Mrs. Lawson, who's going to talk a little bit more about our multi-tiered systems of supports at Highland.
Thank you. Okay. So this year, we have continued to build on our MTSS process. So like I said, we meet monthly with all shareholders. So that includes our classroom teachers, our instructional coaches, both our math and our reading instructional coaches, our title support teachers, our student-family support specialists, our ESL staff, and also me and Mr. Britton are present at those meetings. At those meetings, we are looking at the whole child, and we want to really support the notion that we're all a team and we're all in this together for the student. Our mission through this process continues to be to grow and support all of our students, preschool through sixth grade. And we are making a conscious effort to not start over each year with the students. So we took all of the information that we had on students last year, both data and a narrative, and hit the ground running this year to make sure that the process continued. We're also making sure that we're focusing on data and not teachers coming in and saying, "I feel this way." We're guiding them back to look at their data and make decisions based on that. So as we've been looking at our data, we realized that there's not just a need for reading-only, but also math intervention. So we have worked with our staff through our process to identify needs and provide targeted and tiered instruction. So if you look there, we have our tiers of intervention. So our Tier One, that would be our students who are scoring above the 29th percentile based on MAP, and those are students who are getting daily classroom instruction from their teacher. And then we have our Tier Two students, so those who are scoring between the 15th and 29th percentile. They need a little bit of extra support. So their teachers are pulling them over for small-group intervention, working on targeted skills that they need. And then we have our 2.5, so kind of in the middle, and they need even a little bit more support. And so those students are getting whole-class instruction from their teacher, making sure they're not missing that rich Tier One instruction. They're also getting intervention from their teacher, and they're getting daily pull-out, small-group intervention from a title teacher. So we're hitting it on all fronts to make sure that we can get these students growing. Also, we want to make sure that we let you all know that we are paying attention to our students who are accelerated, the ones who are scoring above the 90th percentile, those Tier Zero students, and making sure that we're providing enrichment opportunities for them. Okay, perfect. Thank you. So knowing all of these things, we wanted to make sure that our professional development opportunities for our staff were meaningful and purposeful and aligned with our needs. So we included, we have included PD this year on rich tiered instruction, so all three, all four of those tiers, making sure we're meeting students where they're at, but also providing that grade-level content. Progress monitoring so we can assess and determine if we need to change the intervention we're providing or continue it or up the intervention. Engagement and collaboration, and then also making sure that we're data literate.
And excuse my pun, but something we pride ourselves at Highland is growing our leaders within the building as well. You know, Mrs. Lawson and I both have experience in other buildings in the district, so we brought those experiences from Riverview and Ridgeway with us to Highland. And you know, it's year two together, it's feeling great, and we keep that momentum going. And we're bringing those perspectives from other buildings to Highland to make Highland the great place that it is focused on learning, nurturing, and growing all of our students. We also have a huge focus on our shared leadership. I am so proud that four of our educators, two of our coaches and two of our teachers, are part of the LEADS program. So they're meeting with district-level administrators to hone in and grow in their own practices as they finish their master's programs in school leadership. I also want to make sure that we highlight that we are providing opportunities to build the capacity within our staff as well, building and growing so they can support our teams, our students, our families with continued growth as the mission at Highland. We have incredible staff at Highland, and we can learn from everybody. It is so great to see them get up and present and work in and day in and day out with our staff. It is just phenomenal to see. Every Friday, our leadership team meets and stands in our office to go over the glows and grows from the week and make sure that we're looking ahead, to ensure we're all on board and able to support one another so we're successful for the week coming on up. So if you ever walk into Highland, we're all standing in the front office. Join us. We'd love for you to join on in and find ways that we can support each other to grow on forward. Lastly, we're growing with connecting with our community as well. Since COVID, we have increased our partnerships each year with our dedicated group of teachers and staff. We've partnered monthly with organizations that support us with ongoing projects to bring new opportunities to Highland, like our monthly partnership with The Woodlands, our monthly support from local businesses. And this spring, we're going to have a Highland Night Out so we can go out and support the community that continues to support us. So we look forward to that as well. We're also building that capacity between school and home, bringing that focus to both academic and SEL support through events throughout the school year. This fall, our outstanding coaches worked really hard to host our first Curriculum Night where we had families come on in and learn about our resources, learn the insight, and get hands-on learning with their students so they can support from home and continue to build that bridge. And we're increasing that messaging in specific ways that families can support from home in all content areas. I also want to highlight that we're expanding our Boys and Girls Club after-school program, as well as continuing to support our Y-base before-and-after-school care. And connecting with our family events to best fit the needs of our students and community is a huge highlight this year. We've expanded to 26 out-of-school events, which is the most that we've ever had, and we're leaning on our PTC, our Parent-Teacher Council, to gain insight how we can better connect with our community and the needs within our community. These highlighted events include Grandparents and VIP Day, Hispanic Heritage Night, Literacy Night in Milliken Woods, called Oktoberfest, Holidays Around the World Night, as well as some of our PTC events like Donuts with Dudes, our Walk to School Day, and our Mother and Son Glow Party. You know, at the end of the day, once again, it's all about our incredible kids and giving them the tools, the resources, and the support they need to shoot for the moon and go far beyond the stars here at Highland. And this is just some of the many wonderful times we've had so far this school year.
The future of the world is in my classroom today. On our opening days, me and Mr. Britton shared this quote with our staff. We've continuously come back to this as our driving force, and we know that making, that we are making a difference in our students' lives each and every day. We're addressing not just their academic needs, but their well-being, which we know will prepare them for a bright future ahead.
So once again, Mrs. Lawson and I want to thank you for taking time this afternoon to talk to us about the wonderful things at Highland. Thank you to our board members, our Board of Education. We couldn't do it without all the support here in Hamilton. And most especially, I want to celebrate our Highland staff, students, and community. They are absolutely phenomenal, and we continue to grow and learn with them each and every day. Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you. Mr. Britton and Mrs. Lawson, it always continues to amaze me what is going on in our elementary schools. You guys are really honing in on data. You're doing fact-based assessment. You're really understanding what the kids need, and you're just totally focused on our children. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate that and how much this community appreciates that as well.
Thank you.
So thank you.
I agree with President Baker. You're doing a phenomenal job over there.
Thank you, Ms. Britton.
I live in the Highland Park area, and so a lot of your students are my neighbors. And talking to them, they love to go to school. They love it down there. The parents love it. And your walk-to-school thing you do every year, oh, the community, Highland Park community loves that.
Absolutely.
So keep that up. I'm really impressed with your use of the real-time data to help your students and your teachers.
Of course.
And that's a great thing. But the thing I'm really impressed is you're challenging those kids who are in that bottom area of the tier that sometimes are forgotten, these kids that are above level, that need to be challenged, and you're doing that. And that's awesome that you're doing that.
Well, thank you so much.
Mr. Britton, Mrs. Lawson, I always enjoy when the schools come in, especially the grade schools, each one of them's their own little community. And you emphasize that again today. And I don't know how anybody couldn't get excited. Working behind you, I mean, you just overflow with the excitement and the push.
He's a great boss.
Yeah, I could see that. But the dedication that you have for these students is just phenomenal. So just whatever you're doing, just keep doing it, man, because you're doing it right.
Thank you. Takes a team. We got a great team at Highland.
Yes.
That's great. I just want to echo what, because I was going to say something along the same lines about the enthusiasm. If you only have about 30% of that at school, then you've kicked it out of the park. No, I just appreciate all that you do. I was listening to the last part when you're talking about working with families and curriculum and stuff like that. The more the families know, the better it is for your kids. And the more, the better it is, I mean, that they understand what you're trying to do in a school. I mean, I think, I'm just going to be honest, I think most of the problems that we deal with as educators, and I join you with that, is that, is parental support and being able to understand what's going on in the school so they can support their students and encourage their students. So I know you guys are hitting all the bases on that. Great job, and congratulations on the PBIS.
Thank you.
Go to work. That's pretty cool for you guys. And I know a lot of schools implement that, but I think you guys really have it down pat. You seem to really have a stronghold on that. So I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Mr. Britton and Ms. Lawson, first of all, I just want to publicly thank you for your leadership at Highland. Ryan, every time you come up here and give this presentation, I still go back to the discussion we had prior to you being placed over at Highland as principal. And I walked away from that, and I knew we had the right person.
Thank you.
You've been here since we started really emphasizing the component of growth versus achievement, that entire process, understanding that if our kids grow, we will eventually, you know, get those achievement results. But it's about the process. I think you were one, if not the best, one of the best teachers that I've seen in 33 years in education in the classroom, and that now extends over into your administrative career. You and Ellie have been laser-focused on the right things, the focus on academics, but also with the personal needs of students and staff. And you know, sometimes that's a tough needle to thread, and you've done that quite nicely. I mean, every time I walk into Highland, you can feel the energy and enthusiasm, and that's exciting to see. And so I just want to thank you for everything you're doing for the students of Highland and also the connections you've made with the Highland community. So thank both of you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, next on the agenda. Okay. This is an organization that's near and dear to my heart, since I was president and CEO of that organization for seven years, which is Butler County United Way. So they are going to come in and give us a presentation.
Each of you in your board package should have a short summary of what the Adopt a Class concept is. It should be the second page in if you haven't. Should look like this.
Yeah.
Give that to Dave.
Yeah.
There you go. Oh, okay. But that gives you, that'll give you a starting point and a reference point for discussion.
Well, it is good to see you old friends here tonight. Hey! Are we ready? Yes. This is Pam Cottle, who is president and CEO of Butler County United Way. She's going to talk to us about the Adopt a School project. Mike, do you have anything?
I'll hold my comments until after the presentation. Pam, I'm going to turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for allowing us to be here today. I know you all are here to hear information about the Adopt a Class program, and you're wondering why Butler County United Way is here and what we have to do with it. I'll connect those dots in just a few minutes. If I might take a few seconds just to kind of give you a background of who we are, Butler County United Way. We have been serving Butler County through our predecessor organization since 1920, 103 years. And some of you may recall that up until recently, there were three United Ways in Butler County, one in the Oxford area, one in the Middletown area, and then Butler County United Way served the rest of the county. And that caused for a lot of confusion, a lot of duplication of efforts. For example, if Big Brothers Big Sisters wanted funding for the entire county, because they cover the entire county, they had to submit three requests for funding. They had to report to three United Ways at the end of the year. It was just a lot of extra effort that did need to happen. And so in 2018, the United Way of Oxford, Ohio, and Vicinity merged into Butler County United Way, and the Middletown service area was transitioned over to us from the United Way of Greater Cincinnati. And so we're covering the entire county. And why is that a good thing? It's because we are able to now see successes on one side of the county that we can share with the other side of the county, whereas before, everyone was kind of working in their own little areas. Now we can kind of cross those barriers, those invisible barriers that happened between Hamilton and Middletown maybe, and kind of give a more collaborative effort for the whole county. And so where does that bring us to Adopt a Class? Well, I was introduced to Adopt a Class and had one meeting with Sonya, and she immediately impressed me with her program that this is something that could really, really be a great thing for Hamilton City Schools. It is currently in Middletown City Schools, and she'll go into all that. They all will go into all of that. But I was impressed that it could really have an impact. And so I reached out to Mike. Mike sent me to Andrea. I connected Andrea and Sonya, and here we are. And so that's how we were involved at the beginning. And so where does that send us going forward? We have very solid longstanding relationships with lots of corporations across Butler County. Those corporations are just pining for some method to get their employees involved in, you know, community, in corporate social responsibility, so to speak. And so I think that, you know, our relationship with them will lend itself to pulling volunteers for the Adopt a Class program for the Hamilton City Schools. And when they see that impact, I think that the financial support will come from those corporations as well. And so that's our part because we are collaborators, and collaboration is key to success in most cases. And so that's how our involvement would lend itself through the Adopt a Class program. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Bill Burwinkle, who is the founder of Adopt a Class, and he's going to give you the insight into the founding of this program.
Thank you very much. Good evening, and thank you very much for the opportunity to be here today. My name is Bill Burwinkle. Adopt a Class started 20-some years ago at my company in Lower Price Hill. Lower Price Hill is a community where 100% of the kids are Title I, they all live at a BOP level. I'm a runaway and a dropout, and I've been very blessed and brought my business there and met some of these kids, got involved in tutoring. Didn't work very well just because business people are busy and times didn't work out that well. But was impressed with the kids and realized that they wanted no different than all our kids want. They just sometimes don't know how to get there. They don't know what to dream about. And so we started this program where we bring business together with urban school kids. It's a group career mentoring program, and it's all about helping kids be introduced to careers and opportunities they never knew existed. Because if you don't know what to dream about, how can you dream? And my boss, Sonya, told me to keep it short and sweet. That's short and sweet, and Sonya will tell you about the program. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much. And my name is Sonya Foltz, and I have the privilege of being the CEO of Adopt a Class. I started in 2020, actually, March 23rd of 2020, if anyone knows what might have been happening in the state of Ohio. It was quite a day to take over a school-based mentoring program, but-- But I'm a lifelong educator, have spent a lot of years in both K-12 classrooms and then in higher education doing teacher pre-service training programs and administration. So when this opportunity came, it really brought all of my passions together of serving underserved youth and helping our future of Greater Cincinnati find their way into our workforce and into careers that they will find both rewarding and able to lift them out of the current financial restraints that often face many of our families. So what is Adopt a Class? Well, currently, we are an organization that serves 47 schools across Greater Cincinnati and Northern Kentucky, as far south as Boone County, as far north as Middletown. We're in our second year in Middletown, so it's a great example of what this looks like 18 months later. I actually just left there two hours ago watching one of our packaging companies take fourth grade opportunities to have our fourth grade students at Wildwood Elementary become philanthropists themselves. The company has, for long-standing history, done a food drive every year, and then they donate that to local community organizations. But now that they're mentoring in a fourth grade classroom and they happen to be a packaging company, they invited those students to become philanthropists, and those students learn about assembly line packaging. They package all of that food, and then guess what? That food is redistributed to families in Middletown City Schools that are in need. So to watch those students learn both the skills that that company is teaching through our program, as well as having the opportunity to be philanthropists themselves is really a unique opportunity. But that's just one example. So what does our program look like? Well, 20 years in, our program looks like in those 46 schools, serving 400 classrooms, at any given month, 4,000 volunteers show up to do career-based group mentoring. They come in teams of five to eight from any given company, organization, government entity, higher education entity, and those five to eight individuals commit to doing one hour once a month of career and life skills mentorship as a team in a kindergarten through eighth grade classroom. They stay with the same class of students all year and teach them about the careers and opportunities in their fields. So for our very small companies, like Dree House Insurance, they have 12 employees, they mentor one classroom, they teach them about insurance. What does it mean to sell insurance? And why is insurance important? And what does it mean to be a salesperson? Oh, and by the way, we also have marketing, and we have accounting and finance. Take Kroger, though. We know how many employees Kroger has all over Greater Cincinnati. They have 15 teams with us currently. We have from their, from their stores to their digital marketing, to their research and design, to quite a few other departments, all represented. P&amp;G has 22 teams with us across many of their departments. Those teams each are, again, those five to eight employees that come together as a team and go into that classroom one hour once a month and teach students about their careers. And when I say teach, that doesn't mean the old get up and lecture like we used to do. You know, you would invite somebody in, they'd stand for 45 minutes, and the child would probably say, "I'm never gonna be that." That was pretty boring. That's not what we do. We actually have all of our, our teams very hands-on. They get the students every session into a one-to-four, adult-to-student ratio. They actively participate in what they're doing. So this morning, I was at City Hall with City Manager Cheryl Long in Cincinnati. She committed every department in the city of Cincinnati to be a mentor team, so I was with the building and inspections team, and they were in City Hall. They brought their students down to City Hall, and they were creating a futuristic Cincinnati of tomorrow. And the students were actually constructing buildings that then had to get approved to be placed in the city on the floor where they had created roads. So they had to have a hospital, and they had to think about, what are the needs of the city? We can't all be McDonald's, or our city doesn't function. So it's really investing students in those future roles. In doing so, what we as an organization do is, from the time a company says, yes, they'd like to mentor in your classroom, we train them, we assign a staff member to them, we help them look at what is unique about them and what they want students to know about the careers and opportunities in their fields and their company and their industry. We then follow them into the classroom, we coach them, we communicate with your teachers about how it's going. All the while, we're watching for what are the next opportunities we can bring to your school. So how we do that is that we assign a staff member from Adopt a Class to each school that we serve. They know every relationship from the principal to the teachers, to the students, to all of the partners that are in that building. They then monitor, we use Salesforce to monitor everything we do. So if you come from a business acumen, you probably know Salesforce. That's how we monitor 4,000 volunteers, serving 46 schools, 400 teachers, 10,000 students. They log every visit, we monitor that, we watch for any issues that arise as a result of every log that they make. We then intervene as necessary, we're out in the classrooms, and we do this 100% free at the cost of all of our school districts. So there's no cost for this program. I know, most people are ready for the pitch of, so this is what it's gonna cost Hamilton City Schools. Bill built a model 20 years ago where he did not want this to be unattainable for any school that needed it. Bill also told you, we work in underserved communities. All 46 of our schools qualify a majority of students for free and reduced lunch. We don't go to schools that don't do that. So you're not gonna find us in the Sycamores, Indian Hills, Masons, and, and other districts. You're gonna find us in districts where students often have a very small influence of what is possible post-high school. We also don't believe there's one singular successful pathway post-high school. We firmly believe and we work hard to bring representation to your classrooms, that certainly a four-year degree is a great pathway, as is a two-year degree, as is our certificate program, as are training and trades programs, as is work out of high school, as is entrepreneurship, and as is the military. And if you wanna see that commitment, drive by Lunkin Airport on May 3rd. We have every branch of the military bringing installations, which means helicopters and large equipment, to Lunkin, where we will have over 500 7th graders spending a day doing what we're calling extreme touch a truck, the military style. And they're gonna be exploring, what are the pathways? What does it mean to go active duty versus ROTC versus reserves? What does it mean to get your college paid for if you do military service? So those are pathways. So on top of that mentorship in the classroom, we have what we call our supplemental activities. So we're taking your students out to see two-year colleges, four-year colleges, military pathways. We get them in third through fifth grade out to our museums, to our art museums, to the museum center to do the Maiden Cincinnati exhibit and see what 200 years of innovation looks like. They go to the Contemporary Arts Center and get to experience downtown Cincinnati. I have found for our Middletown students, seeing flocks of pigeons on the street is overwhelming. They've never done it. They've truly never done it. So we wanna get them outside of the walls that they live for far too many of our students inside of. We wanna break down those barriers and have them see just the possibilities that are out there. So that's our program in a nutshell. Currently, we have about 170 corporate, civic, higher ed, and community organizations participating. I mentioned serving over 400 classrooms, 10,000 students. Those volunteers give of their time very selflessly, and, you know, I know some of you went and checked our program out in Middletown. I'm glad you did. You probably saw some great things, but when I look at our numbers, year over year, last year, as I said, 4,000 volunteers, we retained 91% of those mentor teams, which means they come back year over year because of the service we provide them. We also recruited 125 new teams, which took us to our 400 we're in. What I may be most proud of, beyond that retention number, and I'm very proud of that, is that of those 125 new mentor teams, 63, 63 teams came from existing partners, which means not only did they come back, they grew the number of teams in our program. And it's because, as I like to say, we're as turnkey as it gets for volunteerism. They don't have to figure out how to navigate your school, they don't have to figure out who to call, they don't have to figure out what to do with their time, they don't have to figure out how to be trained. We do all of that, and then we deliver that product to you and to them. So that's who we are and what we do, and I'll take a pause and let you make comments, ask questions. I'll also pass around a little collection. So I'll give everyone, first of all, Bill's mugshot, because I just have too many to give away. So Bill was actually named philanthropist of the year this past year in 2022 for Greater Cincinnati for the work he's done to impact so many students for so many years. So that, there's a great article in there that'll give the history of Adopt a Class from Bill's view, which I think is, is just fascinating to read. But then also inside, you're going to have an overview of our program and see some impact numbers. And then finally, you will have a two-page front back. On the front, it's narrative of our program by grade band, K-2, 3, 5, 6, 8, and on the back, you'll see the longitudinal pathways that students and mentors really use. So if you're a visual person, you might wanna live on this color side if you wanna know what's actually gonna happen. If you're a reader and would prefer to read about it in the narrative, we give it to you that way, too. But we're really excited about the opportunity to partner with Hamilton City Schools. I will say, the launch of Middletown has become a model for us. We did that a year ago. We started in one school, committed to one school, and before the school year was in, we had fully filled third through fifth grade in two schools. We said, we'll tackle a third this year. We're now on our fifth, and it's only December. So once the word is out that this works, it really grows fast. We were approached six months later to do the same in Ludlow City Schools. Ludlow's a small district, just across the river, but we committed to all classrooms, kindergarten through eight, that was 28 classrooms. We started that relationship in March, so a little later than we even started, are starting these conversations here. And we started the school year, we don't start until October for any administrators or teachers in the room. We know you don't want us in September. You don't want volunteers in September. So our program starts in October and goes through May, eight visits. We fully filled all 28 classrooms and launched 100% full in Ludlow. So we like to say, we deliver when you deliver with us. We did meetings together in the community, we did meetings here in the school, we invited the corporate partners in to see what we were doing, and then we commit a recruiter to the program. So with me today also is Megan Marshall. She is our Director of Corporate Relationships and Strategic Partnerships. So you hand us your contacts for your companies, we go out and we meet with them, we talk to them about the program, we train them, we do lunch and learns, we do pitches, we do all of that. So I told you it was free. You wanna know how we fund this. Everyone always does. The way we fund this is that we ask our corporate partners to be supporters. It is not a requirement, it's not a pay-to-play. If they tell us no, we still want their volunteers most. Bill has always taught me to say, your time is most valuable thing that you have, and we believe in that. So if they say no to money, we know they'll say yes later because they'll value the program. But we want them first and foremost in your classrooms. We also have great support from family foundations, community foundations, individual donors. We're really proud. If you saw Lieutenant Governor Houston put out an FRP for industry sector partnership grants, most recently, we applied, and through our Middletown partnership with the city, the, the school and the Rotary Club, we were awarded $125,000 to continue to grow our partnership there. So if nothing else I said today speaks volumes, I think that might, because, you know, we're growing fast. When I came three years ago, we were serving about 190 classrooms. We came out of COVID with 80% of our volunteers intact. I don't know any other company that retained that type of employee through COVID. We retained our volunteers at 80%. Not one of our schools said they needed to take a break. They said, we'll take your volunteers any way you can. Google Classroom virtually is not the way you wanna mentor, but we made it work. And we came out strong and have continued to just grow the program. So now I'll pause and say, what questions or comments?
Well, it, I'm, I'm impressed. One of the things when I was with United Way was trying to make sure that, again, you know, college isn't the way for everybody, but getting these kids interested in a pathway that they can be excited about is the right approach, I, I believe. And you're right, that the corporate, to Pam's comment, corporate, corporations are wanting to be able to do this and feel like they are giving back to the community, and especially through our highs, or through our schools. And these kids really deserve a chance. And so I, I, I'm very impressed with what you're saying about the program, and, and I called it Adopt a School incorrectly, it's Adopt a Class, that goes way back in my prior life. But yeah, I, I, you know, I'm sure that they'll deal with all of the logistics and things like that, but it, it's impressive.
Thank you.
I wanna say this really reinforces everything. At every board meeting, I say, experiences are just as important as what we do in the classroom. And I've reemphasized that for years. And Bill, you probably don't remember this, but I was in that initial meeting with Craig Hockenberry when he was at Euler, because I was the principal at Western Hills High School at the time. And so all of those students eventually came to me. So that whole exposure piece, and I, I do remember the face, it's been a long time since, since that happened. But with that being said, you know, I do, I do have a little bit of, a little bit of experience with this, and it would be something that I would highly recommend that, that, that we, we start off with two different sites for next year. I, I know that we've kind of spoken internally about using Wilson Middle School as well as Linden Elementary as the two initial sites for that. And I know Jesse and, and Brandy are here tonight, but I, I do think exposure, exposure, exposure to a variety of different things i- is a critical component to all of this. And, you know, it would have my full support and recommendation.
Thank you.
Well, as the city of Hamilton is growing, and we know that we're gonna need people that have some types of skills, I can see where this cannot hurt anything. I think it's just another great cog in the wheel to help our schools and our city. And hopefully, the rest of the board will feel like that after, after the first of the year, but I think it's a great idea.
I think.
Sonya, we were able to go out and actually visit in your classrooms, and a lot of members of our team, Ms. Wisebroad and Ms. Hazelwood, went with us, and we were blown away. We were able to walk into two classrooms. The model of your program is genius, because it models what we try to do in, in our own classrooms. There is kind of an engaging opener, something fun with the kids each day, then they do a hands-on activity related to, they were actually designing a product to put in their box. I think it's the same packaging company we're speaking to. And then what I really like is the last 15 to 20 minutes is an opportunity for the mentors to sit with the students and converse and, and get to know them. For some of our kids, that is often the only time that they're sitting down and having that one-on-one attention and affirmation from students. We also, on the way out, got to meet some of your business partners, and they were falling all over themselves about this program, how much it meant to them as community members. The companies that we spoke with were actually Middletown-driven, which is something that was very unique. Our city is growing, mister is grow, and I, I love the idea of how can we grow our own businesses. Many of our kids don't understand the wealth of opportunity they have in their own backyard in the city. And so just hearing from the adults of how excited they were and how much this meant to them, just, we all walked out, I, I don't even think we made it to the car before we all said, when can we start and how do we get this going? So just for logistics for the board, our goal would be, you know, as, obviously, as long as you're all on board with us moving forward with this, to work with Sonya and the organization, to try to link up partnerships for 8th grade at Wilson to start next year, 3 through 5 at Linden, and then the, the launch would be in August of '24. So we would use second semester to get those partners lined up, and as we partner them and we see that success, the goal is to grow this across the district. And so, you know, when Sonya and I met, we talked about, you know, don't start with your most needy school, and don't start with your school kind of at the top, kind of pick those ones in the middle that get over, overseen at times, and that's where we, where we are starting. Her biggest qualifier was, you need two principals that are passionate about kids, philanthropy in this city, and you're looking at them. So these principles will be essential. I'd like to have them come back once we get this up and running and hearing from their perspective, but this is a slam dunk, in my opinion, and I'm excited for the opportunity it will do for our kids. So thank you for bringing this. I've been smiling since we met the first time, and I just think this is going to be a game changer for our kids and for our staff to learn what businesses in the area are looking for. So thank you.
You're welcome.
I can't imagine that any of us would, would, would not wanna have this program. And I also wanna thank my predecessor employer for making that connection and collaboration, which is what you all are about. So, thank you.
You're welcome. And, you know, the one thing I was remiss in saying, and, and I just wanna make sure I leave that you all have this vision, is look at one of those third graders today, and you give them third grade- them 3rd grade with a mentor team, 4th grade with a different company, 5th grade with another company, and even just 8th, that's four different pathways and careers and industries they understand, but wait until we're K-8. Nine years of different industries, it's a game changer. And, you know, I think it also, as you mentioned, is a game changer for your teachers. We know how to teach. We have no idea what it means to walk on a manufacturing floor. So to get your students, and I also didn't say that, all of our teams take their students out to their place of employment at least once through the school year. So they also have that experience. So, you know, it, I get to represent this organization, but I also get to smile every day and say, I have the best job in the world. Megan?
I'm just going to jump in for one minute, because I was at a site visit today at an investment firm in Cincinnati, and they had kindergarteners to their office. And it was a pretty simple visit. They sat at a conference table, they did an activity for the holidays, and they were treated to pizza. The staff members, however, were interacting with them, and a kindergartner sat back and said, this is the best day ever.
Aww.
And the employees returned and said, this is our best day ever. So it shows the partnership of the organizations.
So from here, we will wait to hear from you. We'll give you, of course, the holidays to think about things, but we look forward to the partnership, we look forward to working together, and this just continues to grow our partnership in Baller County. Thank you.
Next we have is Brad Rui.
He's here.
Okay.
All right, I have hard copies of what you'll see up on the screen, if somebody would prefer a hard copy.
Just for everybody's information, this is Brad Rui. He's an attorney with Dinsmore &amp; Scholl. His area of expertise is economic development, and he helps us, from a school district perspective, makes heads or tails of, you know, all the exciting development that's going on in Hamilton. So, he's here tonight, he's going to give us an overview of Port Authorities.
Great, thank you Jeremy for the introduction. Please feel free to jump in anytime. I'll try to make this relatively brief, kind of an overview, but glad to jump into specific questions or deal structures or anything like that, if you'd like. So, Port Authorities can be created by counties, cities, or townships, individually or in any of those combinations. So, Port Authorities have very broad powers, and clearly, Port Authorities do not have to be located on a body of water. They're prevalent.
That's a good question.
Yes, exactly. So that's, that would be, that's what you would normally think, but, so they're prevalent all throughout Ohio. I would say between 2000 and 2010, there was a proliferation of the growth of Port Authorities. And what a lot of political subdivisions have done, in particular, we don't see too many township Port Authorities, they're primarily county Port Authorities, but in many cases, cities as well, or combined, city-county, is that the legislative body, so city council or county commissioners, will appoint a Port Authority as being the issuing authority. And we'll talk about issuing authority in terms of bonds and that sort of thing in a minute. But in many cases, they are the due diligence and economic development arm of a political subdivision. I think one of the best places to start with this is what a Port Authority is not, what they can't do, because I think there are some very common misconceptions. When it comes to economic incentives that can be offered by political subdivisions and Port Authorities themselves, one of the more common ones is simply a property tax abatement or an exemption. That covers a lot, in terms of, so that, you know, so if a particular plot of ground development is deemed, if deemed there's a tax abatement, a lot of times that will come through in terms of a community reinvestment area, CRA, cities are able to grant CRAs. There's no taxes levied for some particular period of time. Statutorily, you can have different periods of time. A property tax exemption, as opposed to an abatement, is where, often used with tax increment financing, or TIF, where that same property, rather than having an abatement and no taxes, taxes are still levied, but they're redirected, and they're called pilot payments, payments in lieu of taxes, and they're used to support public infrastructure. In either case, the idea is to attract development. So, what Port Authorities cannot do would be to create a CRA. Those are up to cities. They cannot create TIFs. Those are, cities, counties, and townships create TIFs. They cannot create downtown redevelopment districts, which use tax exemption to attract businesses. They cannot create new community authorities. Those are entities that are separately formed. So, they don't abate or create income taxes, but Port Authorities are involved with projects in and around all of those kinds of exemptions. And we'll talk a little bit about some of those powers and what they're able to do and work in conjunction with a lot of these types of economic tax incentives. So, what you see up on the screen are the authorized purposes. Those are simply the statutorily authorized, statutory authorized purposes of Port Authorities. They're very broad. It covers a lot of things in that list. So, you know, when it talks about what can a Port Authority do, typically, the Port Authority is going to start shaking its head, yes, we can do that. Contractually, and just from an authorization standpoint, the powers are very broad. From a jurisdictional standpoint, Port Authorities, for the most part, will have jurisdiction within their territorial boundaries. So in other words, a county creating a county Port Authority typically has jurisdiction within that county. You can carve that out, and you can have less jurisdiction, if you'd like, and you can also have greater jurisdiction. So there are many Port Authorities in Ohio that have statewide authority that can issue not only within their jurisdiction, but can issue bonds or interact in an extraterritorial kind of way. It has to be within their authorized purpose, and your Port Authority would create that in its authorizing documents. But by and large, you see county Port Authorities acting within their counties, and cities acting within their cities. Some have this extraterritorial jurisdiction. There is no statewide Port Authority. So it's up to local jurisdictions to create them. So Jeremy, if you want to flip the slide? So let's talk about some of the specific powers. So one of them is issuing bonds. And in the world of bonds, there's taxable bonds, there's tax-exempt bonds, when the school district has a voted bond issue, or in some cases, a PI levy can support bonds as well. They're tax-exempt, because you have that governmental purpose, that good governmental purpose. You're not going outside of that. And Port Authorities have that ability, too. And when you see Port Authorities issuing bonds, it's often for public infrastructure projects, and not so much for, it helps and assists private development, but it is not the private development itself. It's typically roads, water, sewer, public infrastructure, parking garages, and Port Authorities are involved oftentimes in conjunction with development projects and issuing those kinds of bonds. I'm going to stop there for a minute, and we'll come back to that thought. But Port Authorities also have the ability to issue bonds for non, sort of traditional development projects, where there's a developer. They can also issue them for these other areas in which Congress has made carve-outs, so 501(c)(3)'s, for example. So hospitals and healthcare institutions, long-term care, nursing homes, cultural facilities, YMCA's, JCCs, multifamily housing. Port Authorities can be involved with the issuance of all of these types of debt instruments. Typically, they're revenue bonds. There's no full faith in credit. There's no underlying ad valorem property tax that Port Authorities would use to support these kinds of obligations, as a school district does when you have a voted bond issue. So it's a little different. They rely on the revenues from the hospitals or the healthcare institutions, or in a development kind of project, from the development itself. And so, when you have, say, for example, so we'll kind of go back to the example of a Port Authority issuing bonds for the benefit of a development, typically, it's going to be roads, water, sewer. The revenues that support those bonds typically will come in from those tax incentives, from the tax increment financing, from the pilot payments that are redirected. So when they're, when a Port Authority is issuing, or so, or for a parking garage would be a typical Port Authority kind of project, you would pledge the revenues from that parking garage. And as we'll see, when we go, well, let me back up. One other thing that's important about the Port Authorities, the reason that they're the, they have the authority to issue tax-exempt bonds for public infrastructure projects or for those other types of projects, healthcare, hospital facilities, is because they have sovereign powers. So while Port Authorities do not generally issue bonds that are supported by ad valorem property taxes from the Port Authority itself, they do have a limited ability to issue one mill of a voted property tax. I have not been involved with a Port Authority that has actually levied that mill. Statutorily, they can do that. But most of them, again, are revenue projects. The reason they have that is because they have sovereign powers for federal tax purposes. You have to have the ability to tax, police power, or eminent domain power. Port Authorities have all three. So they are powerful organizations. They're bodies corporate and politic, and they have, at least from an IRS standpoint, those key, one of those three key sovereign powers, in their case, all three, and that gives them the ability to issue tax-exempt obligations, not just taxable obligations. So, the ability to issue bonds is one of the key components, and based on the revenues derived from projects, and we'll look at some different revenue sources as well, not just from tax incentives like TIF or CRA. Another power that they have is the ability to exempt sales tax. And so, the first three bullet points up there that you'll see are typical capital lease sales tax documentation. That's kind of part and parcel to the transaction structure. So, when it, so developers will come to Port Authorities and say, can we get that sales tax exemption that Port Authorities give in Ohio, that they have the legal authority to give? And it's a very common ask. They may or may not ask the Port Authority to issue bonds with that. A lot of times, developers will simply come in and say, we want the sales tax exemption. And so, in order to obtain that, the Port Authority has to have a vested interest, it has to have either an ownership interest or some sort of long-term leasehold interest in that particular project. And so if you're talking now about, now we're not talking about just roads, water, and sewer, now we're talking about the actual development itself. So whether that's going to be some sort of multifamily housing, maybe you're bringing in light manufacturing, warehousing, that sort of thing. So, that documentation is very important, because it actually provides the Port Authority with enough of an ownership interest in order to grant that sales tax exemption. So if you're asking yourself, what does that look like? Just a quick example, so let's just say we had a $10 million project. At the, at the end of the day, the developer is going to spend 10 million, it's going to get a $10 million loan for this. So typically, your sales tax has to be just those materials that are integral to the building itself. So, a lot of times, when we do the math, we'll just exempt out 50%. We're just kind of, you know, spitballing a little bit. And so if we exempt out 50, we say 50% is going to be non-qualifying, because it's not really integral to the building itself. So we have 10 million, now we've reduced that to 5 million. And we take the property tax, or I'm sorry, the sales tax in place, I believe it's 6.5%. Is that correct? So we do 5 million times 6.5%. We get 325,000, and most Port Authorities then take a pretty good fee for doing this. You've come to us, you want us to engage and be at risk and enter into these documents. In many cases, it's very typical for a Port Authority to say, we'll take a 20% fee off that. In this case, that would be $65,000, leaving the net benefit of $260,000 on a $10 million development project, and just start multiplying that as you go up by 20 million, 30 million, 40 million. So there's certainly a tangible benefit. It's a little higher and a little lower, just depending on the circumstance. So, let's go to the next slide. Port Authorities can also be used in cooperative kind of situations. So, again, kind of back to roads, water, sewer, you may have a city and a county or township coming together, and they may say, Port Authority, we'd like you to issue bonds for this public infrastructure, and by the way, in order to sell these bonds, it's going to take a little bit more than just that tax increment financing. We're going to need special assessments in case, excuse me, in case there's insufficiency of those property tax revenues or those pilot payments coming in. The county may say, well, we'll pledge, you know, some portion of our sales tax to help support this. So in many cases, what you find are what are called CEDAs, or CEDA, Cooperative Economic Development Agreements. And those can be between or by and among a Port Authority and a city, Port Authority, city-county, Port Authority, city-county township, can be a number of, or can even be special taxing districts as well. So cooperatively, you'll see Port Authorities enter into these kinds of agreements with a variety of political subdivisions, and suddenly, with these, you have layers of security that make your bonds more marketable. And so, one of the other capital stack incentives that you see in there is sometimes developers will pledge minimum service payments. They'll say, okay, this, so we've got the TIF payments that we have coming in, and the city says, we can levy assessments to help this. So, as a second tier, we've got assessments, and the county says, we'll either pledge some of our tax increment financing or another revenue source, and then the developer is usually in the mix as well for minimum service payments. It says, we're going to guarantee a baseline to cover the debt service on this. So, in some combination, you find Port Authorities working with other political subdivisions to have this kind of capital stack. And then our last slide, is just kind of the hodgepodge potpourri, if you will, of other incentives that Port Authorities offer. So we'll kind of group the top two, prevailing wage and competitive bidding. It is possible to have exemptions from prevailing wage and competitive bidding, and as we hear many times, the delta to make a project go or no-go, a lot of times is that prevailing wage component. And obviously, there are many considerations with that, but Port Authorities do have that ability. Let me give you two distinctions in terms of ways in which prevailing wage may or may not apply. With a parking garage, it's very typical that a Port Authority would take ownership of a parking garage and then outsource the management of that parking garage. So, from the beginning, you may have all of the documentation going to give the Port Authority ownership of that parking garage. It's a risk that many Port Authorities are willing to undertake, provided there's proper insurance and that sort of thing. But they're actually going to undertake it, and then the documents will kind of control the management and the operation of it. You don't have to have a Port Authority staff necessarily as property managers of the parking garage. But in that particular case, the Port Authority would own the parking garage, which is somewhat typical. And in that case, you would have an exemption for prevailing wage, because the Port Authority undertakes ownership or significant. But you may have another type of project, or it could just be a parking garage, where bonds are being issued by the Port Authority, but they're not taking an ownership interest. In those kinds of situations, I would suggest you that it's more difficult, challenging to get a prevailing wage exception. And if you have the prevailing wage exception, generally speaking, you'd have the competitive bidding exception apply to it. Competitive bidding is a little bit easier to get, there are a number of different ways to get it, through leases and other arrangements. Port Authorities are also linked very closely to redevelopment authorities. So there is a distinction between a redevelopment authority and a Port Authority, but oftentimes, Port Authorities take responsibility, or you'll see this overlap of Port Authority, board members and/or staff in redevelopment authorities. Redevelopment. Redevelopment authorities are very powerful from the perspective of having the ability to acquire underdeveloped properties or properties in need of redevelopment, clearing all the tax liens and making those marketable parcels. The Cincinnati Port and many others, Cincinnati Port is very active in doing that. Just the other day, I think we were reading an article about the Crosley Building, where the port authority there had undertaken that. And that would be a great example of, you know, utilizing not only the port authority powers, but also clearing out, using a redevelopment authority to clear off liens and other things to make that a marketable parcel. Port authorities are also involved with PACE. That's Property Assessed Clean Energy Financing. That usually involves another type of entity called an Energy Special Improvement District. But once that's formed, port authorities can, again, issue bonds or obligations to support that. But again, they're revenue bonds. So they're counting on the assessments or the energy savings, really, in those cases, that come off the property for HVAC, lighting, windows, doors, all the typical energy conservation kinds of improvements that you might see on properties, big and small. Port authorities may say, here's the money upfront. Then you guarantee repayment through energy savings on an ongoing basis to repay those bonds. Port authorities are fee and revenue-driven. So it's very common to see upfront costs in terms of an issuance fee and then ongoing costs. All port authorities have different fee schedules. But it is common to see ongoing revenues as a result of being an issuer of bonds or providing a sales tax benefit. They're fee-driven. Many port authorities are supported by the entity that form them. So for example, with that Cincinnati Port Authority example of obtaining the Crosley Building, the county, I believe, was instrumental in providing money upfront for the acquisition of that property. So they're often supported by the underlying entity that created them, but they are fee-driven. And so their goal is to be responsive. So they typically will meet at a moment's notice, you know, to get development projects done. But there's a cost to it. So while they're active, they're fee-driven. And then new community authorities, I just want to mention, I put that in. Port authorities are not new community authorities. These are two separate kinds of entities. And while they often overlap. So what you see in many cases is a port authority may issue bonds for the benefit of a new community authority. New community authorities have separate powers, can levy community development charges that look a lot like taxes. So they can issue an assessed valuation charge, sales tax, or a facilities charge, and even an income tax. But they're different and they're separate from port authorities. But like all of these other economic incentives, port authorities work closely with these kinds of entities. Glad to answer questions. Hopefully, that's a bit of an overview. A lot to be said there.
So Brad, with the, seeing that the city of Hamilton is going to have their own port authority, and how we interact with the city on some of these development projects from a school board perspective, where do we fit in all that?
Yeah, so I think what you're going to see with the formation of a port authority is pre-2000, and I'm just ballparking, but pre-2000, cities, counties, to a lesser extent, townships, were very much involved with economic development. And since then, there has been this shift to use an entity that specializes in economic development, that vets and does the due diligence, and that really doesn't put at risk a city or county sort of general fund, if you will. You know, it's all revenue-driven. So as opposed to working with an economic development office, I think, now, economic development office isn't going away. I'm not suggesting that. But from, in particular, on the side of issuing bonds or obligations, I think you're going to see a lot fewer issued by, in this particular case, the city, and having it going through the port authority. So interacting with the port authority and its staff, you know, I think is something that you can expect. So, you know, again, there's no magic tax dollars, you know, running into the port authority. They're revenue and fee-driven. And typically, the repayment sources that they look to often are derived from these economic incentives.
So in regard to that, if a developer is trying to put a capital stack together...
Exactly, yep.
Then it's the port authority that may come to us to try and get a TIF, or, I mean, because we're affected, you know, we gain our revenue off of property taxes.
Right, right. So what will happen in those cases is the port authority, a lot of times, and their municipal advisors, will put together term sheets because they are the central sort of collector of this capital stack, as you described it. So you'll see a term sheet with all, you know, a variety of different sources. But when it comes to TIF and it comes to CRA in particular, or downtown redevelopment districts, it's still the underlying political subdivision that actually has to implement those and put those. So you're not going to get away from dealing with, you know, the city-county township when it comes to the establishment of the TIFs and the very typical garden variety kinds of economic incentives. But you will see kind of the port authority acting as the repository for all of these revenues. And they will certainly be involved and be visible.
Okay, thank you.
Brad, you mentioned the port authorities are the economic development leg of whether it's a county, township, or city. Do they have their own board? And how is that board typically appointed?
They do have a board. And it is, so it is typically the creating entity that will appoint those board members. If you have a joint city-county kind of relationship, you know, it's really up to those entities to determine whether there's going to be a dominant. You know, one's going to appoint six and the other's going to appoint five. So there's a lot of variety in terms of the number of board members. So, you know, we've seen port authorities with 12, some have five. You know, so it's really up to the entities that form them. But if it's a singular political subdivision forming the port authority, then they are going to appoint their board members. And then you'll have those on rotating terms.
Any other questions? I have to absorb this a little bit, you know?
Understood, understood, yep.
Thank you very much for that.
Glad to answer any questions. If you want to direct them through Jeremy or that sort of thing, you know, more than happy to answer many questions on a weekly basis about these kinds of issues and others. So glad to just simply respond. Again, you're not on the meter. Glad to, we want you to be astute and ask good questions. It just, it helps the entire team, so.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Brad. I think Pastor Shack, the next on the agenda?
Yeah, we have two different items on the agenda. And this is just information for the board, is that there are some draft meeting dates for the 2024 board meetings. Obviously, we have to vote on that at the next meeting from an organizational standpoint. And so that's a draft. Any changes, that obviously can be made prior to the organizational meeting. And if there are conflicts in that, that's great to look at now. But those can all be run through President Baker as far as that goes. And we can get that organized so that when we meet for the organizational meeting on January 11th, we'll have that finalized. A second was just a point of order, a piece of information was, the organizational meeting only happens once a year. And so with that, I kind of created a structure on what that looks like. A couple of different things that we've added this year from last year. First, is that we will need to appoint an individual for a new three-year term for Butler Tech. That was a three-year term of which Pastor Shack is at the end of that three-year term. And so there will have to be a nomination and there will have to be a representative from Hamilton to serve on the Butler Tech Board. A second thing, and this is something that Mr. Davison brought up to me, I think mid-year of last year, is the fact that I have put on there recommendation on who's going to be our primary legal counsel for next year. And that has not been on past organizational meetings. But I wanted to make sure that we had that information on there. And then some of the other things are just, you know, the things we're required to do through an organizational meeting.
Okay. I believe we are going to go into executive session?
I'll make the motion to go to executive session.
Thank you, thank you. Up, Mr. Frazier?
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Mr. Isgr?
Yes.
Mr. Sprig?